Two thousand and eighteen meeting to order, member present are David, Jennifer, Kenny, and Susan. Um, approval of minutes from the October eighth, twenty eighteen, pages one through three.
Can I make motion approval?
Motion.
Motion made by Kenny, second by David. Approval of minutes from the October eighth, twenty eighteen meeting, Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susan, yes. This time we move on to the approval of encumbrances.
Okay. Jeanette kept us down a little bit this one. Appreciate her doing that. Two fifty nine is supplies for the high school office. Two sixty one, sixty two, and sixty three. That, we sent a delegation to the traumatized student summit in Oakville City. It's, it was a real good training for us and things that we're gonna look at in the future. We have a large number that fall into that category in that definition. Two sixty four, the Mobi Max, that's a middle school reading instruction program. The ACT Aspire, that's part of our grant that we're working on. So that's kind of a pre ACT that we'll be giving our eighth graders. And we'll build on that for the tenth grade ACT and then again on the eleventh grade. So we're, we're working hard to address that. And, you know, there's so much that's thriving on that test now and it's such a huge financial savings or burden to kids and parents and stuff that we, we're making a real effort to do better there and to provide more opportunity for, for our students. Two seventy four, Hill Glass and Door, that's completing the entrance at the middle school for our, we are, we have a much safer, more secure situation for those parents and students at the middle school. And then... Two ninety one, that's Carl Perkins money for Ms. Johnson's faces class. That is twenty six MacBook Pros that were purchased with our Carl Perkins money. Two ninety six, when you see bus supplies on eBay, it looks kinda funny, you know, why are we ordering bus parts off eBay? But those are harnesses for some, some students. They're, they're a little bit more than a seatbelt, very secure to some more smaller kids that have trouble sitting in the seats and stuff. So it's strictly a safety precaution. And then the two ninety nine and the three oh three are more materials that we've ordered in line with our test preparations and our test review. Any other questions on any of the purchase orders?
Any questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve the encumbrances?
Second. Question made by David, second by Jennifer, to accepting encumbrances as listed. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Answers yes. This time we move on to other financial reports, pages four through sixteen.
Just going to our financials. We started the month with one million eight hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. Our monthly receipts this month were eight hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-five cents. Our warrants was nine hundred, eight thousand, four hundred, thirty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. It left us with a monthly balance of one million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. We had a hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and seventeen cents outstanding in warrants, which leaves our total monies available at one million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and four cents. You can see that we spent nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars out of our building fund, which leaves us at five hundred and ninety-three thousand, ninety-four dollars and eighteen cents here in November, which December and January will be big for our building fund and our general funds. So we've done a good job of replacing all of the money out of the building fund that we spent to bring our football stadium up to ADA compliant. And we'll kind of address a little bit of that in a little, just a little bit. For now that we've moved forward on our ADA compliance, we're going to address a Title IX issue and keep working to bring all of our facilities up to, up to date and up to a level that they need to be to represent all of our students. Child nutrition, you'll see that it is a little lower than normal, but we, it's been a little slow filing claim, or getting our claims back at this point. For some reason, after school starts, you have to file an application with all of your new free and reduced lunch students and all that. And the state's had a hard time working with the federal government, getting everything okay. It's the first time we've ever had trouble getting anything through the State Department or the USDA. That was a joke. But, but it's, it's cleared now, so we, and like I said, fortunately, we went into the year with a very healthy carryover, so we haven't had to worry about any of that at any time. So as far as on just the balance sheet, we're still doing very, very well. Okay, I had this set up and I've tried to really distinguish or just break it down into, as we go through this, our new revenues and what the, the raises have cost us, so that we get a real idea of how we're doing on this. You can see that for, this is for this month, our payroll this, this month, it was four hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents, whereas our payroll last year for that month was seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and fourteen cents less. And you can see that our bills this month are considerably higher than they were for this month last year. But I don't want anyone to get too worried. Here's our state aid payment with that aid, with the raise money, and this is strictly, state aid is up sixty-four thousand dollars. So let's take a look at where we are to date. You can see the regular payrolls right here to date. For this year, we spent a little over one, or two point one million dollars. And last year at this time, we had spent almost one point nine million. The difference is two hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. You can see that our state aid is only up a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So the first assumption is the money that they gave us didn't cover the raise. But there's two things that you have to consider. Number one is we would have had a little more than a forty thousand dollar step increase, whether there was any raise at all. Number two is insurance went up last year. So what we're receiving from the state for, to cover our health insurance costs now, or the cost is actually more than it was last year. The great news is for January of this year, there will be no increase in the cost of health insurance for the first time in my education career. So, and then the, the other thing that you have to look at is our local money is up. So if your local money's up, your state money's gonna be down. So it would be, I wish I could just give you one set number and say, here's the difference, but it's, it's not possible. But if you put all of those together, we're very comfortable in being able to pay for the raises that we have given this year. And if you remember, here's where we are compared to this time last year. We're ninety-seven thousand dollars down. But we've also already purchased a bus this year. Last year, we paid the, we paid the county treasurer, but it's for our assessment fee that we pay, that we're billed from the assessor's office. People forget, it costs us, we paid them fifty-three thousand dollars. If you think there's anyone out there that's tax-free, not even the school, okay? Because we have to pay, but we paid that a month early this year. We also made our payment on our special ed bus a month early this year. And then Ed Annuity, which is our curriculum for all ed, we paid it early as well. So when you go to, you say, well, we're, we're down ninety-seven thousand dollars. We're really not down ninety-seven thousand dollars. We're really operating on about the exact same level we were last year. With the caveat in there that we've got about two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in federal claims that we have sent in, but we don't have the money for it yet. So we're, we're really doing really good. Financially, things are looking pretty good around here at this point in time, okay? Any questions on any of that?
All right, this time we move on to public comment. Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. Any comments concerning agenda items, no one present for that. Other comments in accordance with policy, the ED dash R, no one present for that. But this time we move on to presentation, Mitch Byrd for the yearbook.
I'd ask Mr. Byrd to come and kind of give us a little recap of all that they've been doing and achieving, and he does it a lot better than I do. So, Mr. Byrd?
Well, well, actually, I was, I was gonna say just a little bit, but you know, you gotta definitely wanna hear probably from the students more than you wanna hear from me.
Absolutely.
If you haven't seen Facebook or the front page of the newspaper this week, the yearbook has been doing very well. And of course, Mahaly was a part of that yearbook last year, and she's the editor in chief this year. So, you know, she definitely knows what she's doing, and of course, we, we hope to repeat that success. We've had the best yearbook in the state for the last, for six of the last seven years. And I also think that other year was the best too, but I'm a little, little cautious about that. But I wanted her to be able to tell you a little bit about how they did last year, because we always compete from the previous year, because you have books that finish in the spring and some that don't finish until the summer. So, you know, we all have to compete kind of like on the same level at the same time. So I'll let Mahaly Minor say a few things.
Um, we came home with twenty-two individual awards. The next school that had the most awards was twelve, so we add that up, we were fourteen awards ahead of then. We came home with twenty-six in total. We got the two biggest awards, obviously being All Oklahoman and Sweepstakes. One of our editors in chief came home with Editor of the Year, which was Chloe, Bryson Hoover, and Kristen Cops came with Designer, right?
Designer of the Year.
Designer of the Year. And there was only five awards given like that, and it was through all the schools. It wasn't by division or anything. And coming home with two out of five was a pretty big accomplishment. We worked really hard on this book. I'm not gonna lie, I hated the theme. But I guess it did okay. Yeah, we put a lot of time and effort into this book and I guess it's hard to say.
You guys probably saw the book, and we gave you guys copies of that. Just to add a couple of things to that, one of the comments from one of the judges that, you know, looked over the book, they read the entire book from cover to cover, looked at everything, based it on design, photo, photography and writing. One of them said in the notes, it was just to us, that all, like she said, all schools advisors and yearbook staff should be looking at our book as an example of how to do yearbooks in Oklahoma. So I thought that was a pretty good pat on the back for them and everything that they're doing.
Y'all are doing a great job and we appreciate it. And just to let you know how demanding Mr. Byrd is, he told me I needed to go get a new picture made because he didn't want me to count off with yearbook next year. He doesn't let anything slide. He's on this thing for you all to know.
And we had to get on the right back, right?
Little inside joke there. No, I, we appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, awesome.
Thank you, guys. We're gonna sneak out of here. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much for coming.
Great job.
Bye.
Information on superintendent's report.
This is just kind of very quickly to play a little catch-up to a few things that have gone on here. In case you haven't heard, we're in the second round of the playoffs. Went to Lucas Grove Friday night and won. Will be playing at Heritage Hall in Oakville City Friday night. It's gonna be a seven o'clock kickoff. The band has just been extremely, extremely busy throughout this whole entire year. And I did not get the number of superiors and excellent ratings and color guard awards. And it's just been tremendous. And, and Ms. Stamper's here and Peter in a little bit, we might let her mention a little bit of some of those things. But it capped off with a superior at the regional marching competition, and they did a great job. Again, I just briefly mentioned the yearbook staff, and there's gonna be some things that I'm gonna leave out. If you didn't, if you weren't able, our junior high football and junior varsity teams were both extremely successful this year. Speech team qualified for a state in the one act play competition, which is a first-year speech teacher and great deal. And I was even looking, and we should've, we should've placed at least in the top three, because one of the judges was Nikki Adcock Alderson. So, you know, we should've had a little stickler alum judging. But no, it's great, I mean, for, for a first-year teacher and everything. That was a great accomplishment. FCC LA just returned from the national convention in Louisville, Kentucky, and looked like they had an outstanding time. FFA has been to the national convention in Indianapolis. They qualified their junior skeet shooting team for state competition. They have shown livestock all over this year. They've been very busy. Last week, at the Chicago basketball tournament, we took first place in seventh grade girls and first place in eighth grade boys and girls in that tournament. And I'll tell you, it's just been a great year to this point. But the effort and time and the things that our sponsors and coaches are doing and the quality of students and the work that they're putting in has just been tremendous. And like I said, this is just a very short list of things that we've accomplished at the, I mean, the highest levels. And so it's just been a really good year to be the superintendent and stay out of everyone's way. Well, we're gonna do that over on the...
Okay, wanna cover that?
Yes.
All right, this time we move on to action topic A, consideration of professional development committee for eighteen, nineteen school year, page seventeen.
Okay, I've gotten with the principals, and we've added some parents, a little more parent participation to this committee. We have an administrator, teachers, and parents representing each building. And they'll be, once they're approved, they'll be doing some meetings. And we were, we're going to broaden our professional development just a little bit. I've really done a lot in the time that I've been here, and it's been a very specific focus probably, if you, I hope if you ask the faculty, that, that I've really focused on relationship building with students, and we're doing a great job with that. And I can tell you that just by the number, or the lack of, the number of phone calls I get from parents upset with things that are happening at the buildings, because it's just extremely rare. So when that's the case, I know that our people at the buildings are doing a great job building relationships. So it's really time to expand that into more curriculum development and more classroom practices and while continuing to develop those great relationships. So it's really important we expand that committee a little bit. So, but the principals have worked with their staff, and this, this is the, they've all nominated these members of the committee, and they've agreed to be on it, so.
Marching approval, professional development committee for the eighteen, nineteen school year.
Question made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to accept the list for this professional development committee for the eighteen, nineteen school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes.
Yes.
And Susan, yes. Action topic B, consideration of school board meeting schedule for twenty nineteen school year, page eighteen.
Okay, this is our, kind of our standard schedule. The only time we've got a third Monday night for next year will be the July meeting, with July fourth falling in one of those weeks, as well as moving that July meeting back that extra week in case we're doing some hiring and stuff, it really helps us a lot. So, but all of those others would be the second Monday night.
You will.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I will.
I make a motion to approve the school board meeting schedule for two thousand and nineteen.
Question made by David, second by Jennifer, to accept the school board meeting schedule for the twenty nineteen school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susan, yes. Action topic C, consideration of call for an election, pages nineteen through twenty.
Okay, the, the law has changed a little bit on school board elections. The filing period has not changed. The filing period will open at eight AM on December the third, and it will close at five PM on December the fifth. However, that February election date will only be an election if there are three or more candidates that file for that office. If there are less than three candidates that file for the office, then it will be held on the April second date, which is also your city councilman elections. So, and if there, there are more than two who file for office and no one gets fifty percent or more of the vote, then the runoff would be the April second election. But the filing dates have not changed. And position number four is Johns.
Make a motion to call for an election.
I'll say.
Question made by Kenny, second by David, to call for an election. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer? Action topic, the consideration of Medicaid contract.
Okay, this is to, PCG is the company that provides the software and support for us that we work through all of our special education filing anyway. They work with the State Department as well, so they will also do our Medicaid filing for us. The reason that we quit doing it was there were some schools that were doing it on their own, that there were some, I don't know if you'd call them mistakes, or the school interpreted things differently than Medicaid did, and the school had to go back and pay a lot of money back after they'd already spent the money. So, so everyone just kind of quit. And so then the State Department started working with PCG to make it a more friendly process and to, to help us out. So that's why we're going with the PCG for our Medicaid filing. And if they don't collect, they don't get anything either, so kind of a can't lose.
I make a motion that we approve PCG for Medicaid contract filing?
I'll say.
Question made by Jennifer, second by David, to accept the contract with PCG. I was thinking PCP, I knew that wasn't right. PCG for our Medicaid contract. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Answers yes. Action topic E, consideration of approval of Super High School Band's spring twenty nineteen trip to Washington DC. Students will be flying, will be transported by school bus to and from Oakville City Airport, page thirty-four.
Hey, this is kind of different. We haven't flown in the past, and I try to think of all the questions someone might ask, and it never fails when we get in a board meeting, there's one that I didn't think of. So I asked Ms. Stamper to be here. She and Mr. Stamper do a tremendous job with our band, and she's gonna kind of talk about the, the trip that they have planned and answer any questions that you all might have.
I put some information together, it was, so, because I'm, I'm kind of a faculty-related person, so I'm waiting for this all along. We have ninety-two students in our high band this year, which not every one of them will go to the band trip, but eighty-three of them have committed. And we have twenty-nine chaperones, including myself and Ryan, who will be attending. We've weighed the costs of the buses, and we would only be able to fit a hundred and twelve, which is right at our number. But with that long of a trip, in our previous years, we have to have four bus drivers, and they rotate so that we can have a continual. And when they do that, they bunk up in the back of the buses, and they take about six to eight seats out of each bus. So with that number and with as many students and parents that would like to go, we didn't either have to do a third bus, which would raise the cost even more, or I didn't even really consider flying. We were just looking on the internet and saying, I wonder how much a plane ticket would cost? And it was actually very comparable. And so if you'll look there, I bought it somewhere, the flights was, is gonna come out to be about two hundred and seventy-five dollars per person, and the charter buses would be three hundred dollars per person. So we, we really strive to keep the overall trip cost per student low, because many of them wouldn't be able to go otherwise. And we use these trips as an opportunity to expose the students to as much culture as we can. The one and only time that I've ever been to Washington DC was on a band trip. And so this will be my second time going, if we could figure out, yeah, on a band trip, exactly. And so it's, it's not one of those places that you travel to very often. And we considered it a couple of years ago, but just didn't, the cost didn't really make sense to us then. With as many people as we have now, it, well, okay, might as well, might as well try it. So I apologize, I didn't wanna, wanna drop a bomb on you guys as far as the, the plane. And I talked to my parents about it, and I said, what do you guys think? You know, have you guys flown before? I'm a frequent flyer, so I'm, I'm experienced with it. And with as many parents as we have going, I really feel like the number of students per chaperone would be about three to four students. That'd be very easy to manage getting out of an airport, I think, a lot better. And then when we're there, our, our consideration, we're still pricing, but so far shuttle bus transportation while in the area will be about seventy dollars per student. So the cost is still quite a bit lower than to travel, plus the number of hours that we would be on a bus. And I don't know if you've ever ridden on a, and I have two of my band students who went to Orlando, and one just left with the yearbook. They rode their Orlando trip, and they said, if we have to do it, then we won't go. So we, we just, we're kind of trying to make it as pleasant for them as possible. What questions do you guys have?
Covered it pretty well.
Yeah, it's pretty much covered.
Okay.
Answer the questions out there.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your consideration. And to kind of answer your question from earlier, our, our awards and things that we've got, our color guard has done an outstanding job. My sister-in-law Julie Bishop and Emily Hertz have been helping out a lot with that. And they've come home with several awards, placing second overall in both of our invitational competitions and receiving superior rating in their ensemble performance as well. We went to Old Mulkey Invitational and Glenpool Invitational, and the kids did a really great job, came in second in Glenpool. We made finals in Old Mulkey, and we didn't place as high as we'd like to. We made finals in Old Mulkey and we didn't place as high as we'd like to, but the kids really enjoyed the experience. And our regional marching competition, this will be our twelfth consecutive superior rating. So, very proud of the kids and we're on to another sweepstakes award Friday. We do really well in our concert season.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the Stigler High School Band's spring two thousand nineteen trip to Washington DC.
I'll say. Sorry.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to approve the student high school band's spring twenty nineteen trip to Washington DC. Students will be flying and will be transported by school bus to and from Oklahoma City Airport. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic F, consideration of approval of plumbing for softball locker rooms.
Okay, kind of F and G together. And I had a lot more prepared to go at once and we discovered that we were looking at building over a sewer main that runs right outside the dugout, so we had to start from scratch. And I typically bring everything together, but what I would like to do is let's look at the bids. I've got the plans drawn. And let's look at the bids for the slab and the rough end plumbing. Because if we can get some good days of weather between now and Christmas and get that done, then I'm certain we can at least have the shale ready to go for softball season. Whereas if I wait another month and get everything together for, to go at once and we don't get that weather, I'm afraid we're gonna be in the middle of a mess during softball season. It's a thirty-six by twenty-five building. I've included the coach and athletic director and everyone in this, in the planning. And we've made adjustments and changes. This is the whole dugout right here. Our initial plan was gonna come right off the dugout where the girls could go through a back door from the dugout right into the locker room. But right where the gate is, is actually the sewer main for the city of Stigler. So, we moved it down a little bit. It's got a locker room large enough for twenty-five. It has a storage with a small overhead garage door type door, so we can park the gator there. It also has a single door access and it has a coach's office. And again, we addressed our disabilities issue at the stadium two years ago and we've recouped all of those mon, all of the monies into our building fund. And this is one of those deals where we don't have a place for the girls to have a locker room. And they, I feel like that they need one. It's probably time for us to move on out. And what we, the reason I've put this blank wall, it's actually going to the south. I don't know if y'all are visual or not. I'm kind of visual, so let me.
Is it covered between the dugout and the?
It is not. It's not. And the reason that I haven't done anything out there is because the roof's gotta drain some way. So, it's either drain everything back over here or drain it onto the field where we're going, to be going in and out of the, in and out of the gate. So, I left it. I did not put a cover over it.
What kind of roof's on it? Is it just a flat?
It'll be a metal roof. It's a...
Is it peaked or is it?
Yeah, it's peaked.
And you could put, yeah, and you can put guttering along this one?
You could, yes, you could.
And make it come out on the south end? Guttering to the south end and it's drying out that way?
Yes, you can do that.
Are you talking about, here's the dugout? And here's the end of, talking about extending it that way? This way? Okay, yes, yes. I thought you were talking about to the dugout. No, yeah. I'm sorry. I couldn't figure out where we're gonna get to that dugout without a wall. But like I said, I typically have everything fit together at once and if that's the way you all refer it, we can still do that. It's not a problem for me, but I did want to, I have two plumbing bids. I tried to get two. Actually have three plumbing bids. I did not get the second bid in, a second bid in for the concrete work. The only one I got in was from Mike Bush. And he also has included the plumbing roof in. And that would be ten thousand three hundred dollars. The other two plumbers bid it. Do you have that? Uh-huh. The other two plumbers were thirty-five hundred dollars to rough it in. And the rough end through Leo Perry was the plumber that Mike was working with was a thousand dollars.
And that's included in that one?
Sounds like, yes, ma'am. It's just the rough end. For the total plumbing package. One plumber, Golf Plumbing was at twelve thousand five hundred and Johnson Plumbing was at twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Which I thought both of those were hitting us pretty hard there. So, that's why I was more inclined to stay with the rough end.
So, there's something that happens on, maybe you're...
Is this a commercial?
You can, you can plum house for a lot less. That's for, four stools, three sinks, and two floor drains.
And that's with the concrete and everything?
And the rough end plumbing.
And the rough end plumbing. And this is not, does not, this doesn't include the concrete?
That's the total plumbing.
Just the plumbing. Oh, that's, that's everything. It's just, okay. So, this one's just...
The other two variables that I do not have in writing were thirty-five hundred for the rough end.
This includes the concrete. That doesn't include the concrete and meat. It's just the rough.
This is the total. The rough end for most of them is thirty-five.
Okay.
Now, here's, is that, is that with concrete or without?
That's with concrete.
The only one, the only one that's with concrete.
Yes.
So, his is ten thousand. That's with the plumbing and the concrete and everything done.
Yes.
But it's not like the ceiling or...
No, no, it's just the rough end.
They have four stools. If that's just four, 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 okay. I see that. He's the one that does, does the stuff for the school.
He's done a lot of work for us. He's done a lot of work for us. He has.
And he's got it all itemized. He has the fixtures all itemized.
Yes.
So, if he's gonna purchase, if we purchase all of this, would we, we'd have to purchase all of the, if we did Mike Bush's, we'd have to purchase everything.
Yes.
And he has listed on here. Anyway.
And install it ourselves. And Golf was, he had, he had everything included.
Everything but the partition, the partitions is included in Golf's twelve.
Okay, total partitions, okay. So, if we had some of the janitors or...
That's why, that's why I hate to just do a turnkey because now we are capable of doing so much ourselves. It's why, that we've, we've hired the architect that will inspect and sign off on everything as we move forward. And so, we are in a good position to do a lot of the stuff ourselves and do this very reasonably. And I'm not, I hate to say this out loud in front of the TV cameras and all that, but there is a reason why it's turned the way it is. I know that the band teacher will hate to hear this too, but future, future, the reason this solid wall is facing the south and it's constructed with ten feet walls is to expand a batting cage for softball in that direction in the future. I know we have, I mean, it hadn't been voted on or anything, but that, that is a big part of the reason it's kind of constructed and set up the way it is to help alleviate another issue that we run into quite often.
I followed all these rocks.
I mean, on the bid, Mike Bush's people, anybody as far as, he's twenty-five hundred people on the rough end.
Yeah, I reckon our guys can do most of that.
We can.
Is there anything on this list that we could say?
Uh, the hot water heaters and stuff. We definitely have a plumber coming.
That's minimal, minimal charge. Yeah. And, yeah. Okay. You want to give?
I mean, we got a choice, dude. If you have to get another guy, thirty-five hundred and pay ten thousand dollars for the floor, you know? And that's footing and everything.
Yes, sir. It's a hundred and twenty-two foot of footing and a twenty-six by thirty-five by five inch concrete slab with steel wire.
We did rebar and concrete.
It's the steel wire.
Steel wire.
Make a motion, we approve Mike Bush's bid for ten thousand three hundred dollars for rough end plumbing and slab.
Second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the bid from Mike Bush Construction for ten thousand three hundred dollars for the slab and the rough end for the plumbing and concrete and softball locker rooms. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Hi. This time, we move on to executive session. A, proposed executive session to discuss an act upon the fund business pursuit to twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven, day one of open meeting act. Number one, discussion of resignation of Williams Self Junior High School. Math teacher, football coach, effective October seventeen, twenty eighteen, page thirty-five. Number two, discussion to employ a high school teacher for the remainder of the eighteen nineteen school year. And number three, discussion of a mini Eric Stouts contract for the eighteen nineteen school year.
I make a motion during the executive session.
Second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, at seven forty-five PM, to remain in executive session. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.